All available information. We'll advocate for each of our schools and support high quality public education in Lemonster.
Would anyone else like to address the committee?
Good.
How's that? Everybody saying? Shook their head, yes. Oh, you said you minded by saying it. Oh. All right, one last time, would anyone like to address the school committee? Now we'll close this portion of the meeting, we'll move now on to the communications.
There are no communications received.
Student report.
A lot.
Let's go, Matt, better be a good lineup.
A lot's going on at Lemonster right now, a lot of senior things are going on. Um, everybody wants to rule the world by Tears Up For Fears has been selected as the class song for the senior class of 2023.
You know what year that song was done, George?
Me personally.
It's a new song?
I voted for Time To Pretend.
No, no, I asked a question, do you think it's a new song or you think it's an old song?
Uh, it seems newer, but I really wouldn't know.
I like that.
Hey, I love, I love old music. I love old music.
Go ahead, stick to your agenda.
I like music with wisdom, actually. Um, so, um, I was given, uh, so, so the superlatives for Lemonster were also, uh, given out recently. I was voted most likely to, uh, be famous, most likely to win the lottery and most accident prone. So there's, there's some pros, yeah, there's some pros and some cons there, but it's fine.
Accident prone.
Yeah, the, the prom planning process is complete too, so that's great. Um, Senior Sunrise is being planned and, uh, finally gowns are being, uh, available to be ordered, um, as well as, uh, yearbooks. So winter sports are wrapped up, girls' basketball and girls' hockey ended great seasons on Thursday. Boys' basketball is playing tonight. Spring sports registration closes on Friday. The theater festival was Sunday at LHS. The LHS Drama Club performed, performed James and the Giant Peach and they did a wonderful job as usual. Um, there's a guest speaker tomorrow as part of Ivy Sassu's welcome, uh, sorry, Women of Color Leader Series. The speaker is Colonel Dana Sanders Udo, who is a retired leader in the Army National Guard. Um, finally, Gold and I prepared the election packet for the new school committee rep for next year. Um, we can share it with any of you who are interested in seeing it. Uh, we described the school committee representatives responsibilities and laid out the election process. Uh, candidates are, just, just for a little, uh, brief of the information of what they're, they're, we're looking for for them next year. As candidates are, uh, elected from the entire student body, uh, they must fulfill the following requirements. Letter of intent must be at least 500 words, must demonstrate an urge to improve Lemonster Public Schools as a whole, rather than just LHS. Describe how, how they plan to advocate for the student body and why they feel is important to do so. Um, all candidates must present this letter of intent to the student body of the school through a Zoom meeting, which will be shown throughout the school. The student body will vote for the candidate of their choosing on a Google form. That's it.
Ms. Lee? We missed you last minute.
I missed, I missed everyone too. All right, so, good evening, everyone. So CTI has surpassed its goal of 60 co-op students, but 65 co-op students currently out on co-op job sites. This is the most co-op students the CTI has ever had in the last couple of years. It's awesome. And majority of the CTI co-op students that have been out have, are a high population of juniors. Um, in the past couple of weeks, the carpentry students have framed a deck and installed all deck boards and railings on the back of the addition we are building, which is the house that I had talked to you guys about on Granite Street. Um, with only the stairs left to complete, the rough inspection has been signed off, so they're insulating the walls and ceilings. Carpentry plans to begin hanging drywall at the start of the next, of next week and getting it ready to have plastered down, plastering back. The plumbing students have been busy bees working at local schools such as Priest Street on various upcoming projects. Business Tech has hit the ground with a social media marketing campaign. And also, uh, the business tech shop has been helping to promote the eighth grade CTI, uh, open house, which was taken place on Sunday. Thanks to the available funding, all 14 CTI shops had made substantial purchases of equipment upgrades worth over $400,000, which is amazing. Lastly, as I was saying earlier, on Sunday, March 5th, 2023, CTI had its annual eighth grade CTI open house welcoming potential students to CTI. Two notable students in particular, Evan O'Zamalt and Jacob Magliozzi, who are freshmen in Honors Electronics, were present to show the eighth grade, or graders what Honors Electronic is all about. Evan and Jacob are actually here today to show off the robot that they showed at open.
Robot. Wants to rule the world.
I love it. RD2. RD2 and Hal from 2001.
That's amazing.
Evan and Jacob, do you guys want to talk a little bit about your robot?
So this robot was created by three seniors in the Honors Electronics Program here at CTI. They worked for about two or three weeks to build it. It's got, you want to show them the arms? So it's got full arm control on each side. And then it can, it's got tank treads on the bottom, so it can move forward, backwards, left and right, can turn. And this is a project, it was a kit, and we thank the community for their continued support. And we hope to, in the future years, we hope to build on it and expand it to be more intelligent, interactive, and to be able to do autonomous tasks in other programs.
That's amazing. I know what every dad is home thinking when he's watching this. Did he go to the refrigerator? Got one arm to open the refrigerator? That's amazing. Remember when they first started with the robotic team, they were able to do a, a few kind of motions. Yeah. Kind of, they had to drive over a balloon or something and then. There you go. All right. How'd he beat that?
Battle?
If you do backflip right now, that beats. That's why I wanted him to do a backflip. All right. Superintendent, you wanted to wait on this, you want to get right to the Johnny Appleseed? Okay, let's do the Johnny Appleseed playground.
Table with.
Good evening.
To say this is an energetic team is beside.
All right, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm happy to speak louder, so. Um, thank you, everybody, hi, thanks for having us. Uh, my name is Sarah Hall and I'm a co-president of the Johnny Appleseed PTO. Um, this is my second year in that position along with Karen. Um, just to introduce myself, I have been a Lemonster resident for about 12 years, married to my husband Brandon. We have two children, both at JA, my son Colton is in fourth grade and my, my daughter Hadley is in first grade.
Karen, Melissa, I've been in Lemonster about 15 years now with my husband. I have two children, Al, Skender and Hadley, her daughter are together and then my daughter Ellie is now at Sky. At JA for all six years, says my secret, I love Sky.
Yeah, and we brought Miss Happily.
And I'm Bevan Tapley, I'm the assistant principal at Johnny Appleseed. Um, I work really closely with these two wonderful ladies who dedicate a lot of their time to school. And, um, we're really excited to share with you a project that we're hoping to.
Um, so we are here seeking a new playground for the Johnny Appleseed School. Um, and Brandon, I thought it was interesting you started with your mission statement because that's exactly how I want to start today with our mission statement as the Johnny Appleseed PTO. So our goal is to promote the welfare of children at Johnny Appleseed School through volunteerism, fundraising, and any other effort that has as its goal, the betterment of our children in our school. To provide financial and volunteer support for enrichment programs, educational or social programs for our children, and to encourage a closer relationship between home and school. That mission and this playground project really for us go hand in hand because all of those things are true about the reasons why we want this new playground for our community. Um, so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the current state of our playground. I'm going to show you the redesign and talk to you about the timeline and some of the, the thoughts that we put behind creating this new design. Um, Bevan is going to share with you a little bit about our school community and then I'll go over the quote um, and hopefully seek your approval on, um, starting this project.
Sound good? Go to the next, I know. Oh, you haven't. I think I do. But, oh, this is, next slide? I don't know.
Next slide, go, Kyle.
Oh, there we go.
The wizard, the wizard.
Let me quickly pass these around to you guys, this is just a larger version. Um. So the playground, playground at JA not only serves our 660 plus students at JA, but it's also very much a Lemonster community playground. Um, most days on weekends, school vacations, in the summer, you'll always drive by and there'll always be families enjoying the playground. Um, which is wonderful. That being said, uh, the playground is very well loved, but it's also becoming increasingly well worn. Um, I had our head playground duty aide, uh, Mrs. Sullivan, take pictures of us because we can hear from our children thing and take, see what, um, is wrong with it. But Mrs. Sullivan, who's there every day with the kids, can show us what exactly is becoming a little bit dangerous, um, broken, um, and just played unsafe in certain parts. Um, pictures go around, you'll see there's one where the pull-up bar actually broke off completely, so that's no longer there. There's some exposed footing that the children can trip on, which is very unsafe. Um, and then if you see there's parts of the stairs missing and then the roof and the, um, the finishing on all the poles is all just wearing off. Again, because it's such a well-loved, but very well-worn playground, time for maybe some of it to be replaced.
And it's over 20 years old, so, you know. Um, so if we could go to the next slide, please. Perfect. So I provided here a look at an updated playground to consider for Johnny Appleseed. This new playground structure is really designed to, um, provide different types of play, unique types of play. We included musical features, which is new and not, um, anything that's available in our playground today. We incorporated a sign language board. Um, I don't know if you know this, but one of the beloved members of our custodial staff is hearing impaired and this will help, um, encourage our children to learn ways to communicate with him, as well as potentially other students who come after him that are hearing impaired. Um, we also designed all of this with ADA rules in mind and everything is compliant, um, from that regard. And it's an inclusive and adaptive play structure. We really were thoughtful to think about, um, children that learn and play in different ways, right? With that addition of the music features, we, um, added single, single structures outside of one large structure to, um, promote different forms of play, maybe solo play or small group play. Um, we really, um, thought about expanding the reach of the playground area so we could incorporate more students on the playground at one time because our population is growing and growing, which Bevan will talk about more. Um, one thing I wanted to point out, right in the front, there's a red slide that comes sort of in the middle. Um, and that slide, we really were thoughtful to include because it's a roller slide, different than anything we have today. And what's unique and special about that is if you are a student or an adult that has a cochlear implant and you go down a traditional slide, the static electricity could cause, um, potential disruption with your, with your piece. This roller slide eliminates that, so it's, it's thoughtful in the way to think about different types of students and making sure that they can play on different features of the playground as well. This is just the same playground in alternate view, this is the backside of the view. But as you can see, really, this one highlights the, the expansiveness of this new playground, right? And this, the, the ability to spread the play. Um, we were, we also, um, you can climb from one end of this playground to the other end of it and not have to touch the ground, which really, I think especially for elementary school students, promotes that critical thinking, that decision-making, right? They have to think about, how do I get from this piece over to that piece? And those are, those are things that they can take with them into life, um, outside of, uh, school. Um, we really thought that this new structure and this new design is, um, really going to enhance the mental and physical well-being of students. We know that, um, they've been through a lot in their short little lives and when they come to Johnny Appleseed, it's a safe place, it's a fun place, um, it's a place to grow, um, relationships. So we really designed this with that in mind and there's lots of really unique key things with, throughout to promote that. So we hope that you're as excited about it as we are. Um, Ms. Happily is going to talk to us a little bit about, you know, I mentioned more students at a time and at the growing size of our population, so she's going to talk to us a little bit about our school community.
Next slide. I think this just also points out too that, um, this is an aerial view of the playground and what you see around the outer edge is actually in the already existing space of our current playground. So we actually don't have to really change any of that, um, existing boundary. So we're going to really take out what's there and put something new in place of it. Um, the big difference, and Sarah started to talk about this, is how this playground is spread out. It's really spread out, so it just kind of spreads the kids out when they're playing. Right now, our current structure is really compact, so when you get 50 kids on the structure, they're literally on top of each other. So having it spread out like this and having those other opportunities for kids to play beyond those boundaries with some of those singular games, I think is just going to really, um, adds a lot more enjoyment to that space. Um, okay, Kyle, you can go to the next slide? Thank you, oh, that's working now, okay. So I just wanted to add a couple of things, um, in regards to really the thought behind a lot of the pieces that are on this playground. Um, we have 661 students, um, probably a little more now to date, this is our data back from October. Um, there it's roughly 100 to 120 students per grade level. So what we have to do on a daily basis for recess is split them in half and we have our blacktop area where they're able to play and then we have the playground area where half of the kids are able to play. So a few problems with this, um, we work through them and the kids work through them amazingly, but I just see this new playground eliminating some of these issues. Um, currently, to get 100 students on our playground area would be very unsafe, so we don't do that. Um, it also kind of challenges us when we want certain grade levels to play with each other because we separate them by their homerooms to play. So there may be days where a child who's in one homeroom doesn't necessarily get to play with a child from another homeroom simply because of the way we've had to organize the play at this time and that has caused some issues. Um, we try to work through those particular scenarios as best we can. Um, so this, looking at this whole structure, I look at it and I think, wow, we can get a grade level out in this area and, and all the children will be able to play in this space safely. So that was a big, that was a very exciting thing when we looked at this playground. The other thing that is the heart and soul of Johnny Appleseed is our developmental life skills program. And this playground, the way that it's designed, really is inclusive, meaning that every child that comes to our playground is going to be able to participate in so many different options of play. And that's, that's essential for us. Um, and then our neighborhoods are continuing to grow. Uh, there's many kids that are in our neighborhoods who do attend other schools. They're always at the playground, you know, after school, 3 o'clock, that playground is full. Our creative choices program continues to use the playground after school. So it is a busy spot and it's just time, we've reached a point where it's, it's time. And if, I'm sure all of you have driven by there during the day, it is a busy spot. Um, and it's, it's starting to sort of get worn down quite a bit. Uh, one structure that we are excited to keep is the dragon because I think the kids call it the dragon playground. So we can't get rid of the dragon, dragon's actually in great shape, it might just need a little touch of a paint, but it is, it's a feature that we are not willing to really get rid of at this time. But you never know what kinds of kids are going to come to our school. So we want to be prepared for all students and this is just the way we should be going at this point. Um, is a, is an area where all kids can play. And Sarah didn't mention this, but we talked about it. Elementary school is where they are for the longest amount of time in the earliest years. It's where they learn how to get along with one another, how to problem solve, how to think critically. Um, and I just think that this is, has loads of opportunity, you know? I see our PE teacher using this structure when it's not a recess time because it's kind of set up a lot like a ninja warrior course, really. Um, I see our music teacher going out there and doing different things with the music pieces that are out there. I see STEM doing stuff out there. So I want, you know, I want to think beyond just play and recess and really think about how we can use this throughout our day all the time, so. Yes.
So the next and last slide is the quote, right? So this is where we come to say, and this is what this is going to look like financially. Yes. Um, so this was provided to us by O'Brien and Sons.
Those conversations we had.
Yeah. Um, and O'Brien and Sons is the same company that is doing the Northwest Playground Refresh as well as Barrett Park. Um, and I do believe that they might be in discussion with other schools as well. Um, so just to break this down, they provided, um, this quote to us and this is good through April 4th, but we're hoping not to have to wait that long. Um, are the structures that, that you saw in the picture, that, that cost there is 163,000 and that includes the delivery. There's an installation cost of 55 and a half thousand and that includes the, the excavation of the current material. Um, and then installation of the new equipment and the new engineer wood fiber for the ground. And then the cost for that engineer wood fiber itself, 335 cubic yards of that, um, $10,000 there. So the total project cost that we are seeking is 228,787 dollars. The lead time on this project is 22 to 24 weeks. So with your approval today, hopefully, um, the anticipated completion date would be mid to late August of this year, which is before the next school year starts, so that would allow the, the, all of our children next year to get the full benefit of this structure. Um, the installation plan is about a one to two week project. The biggest bulk of the lead time is just the fabrication and delivery, um, from O'Brien and Sons directly. Um, the J, the JA PTO does plan to purchase a new fence around the entire perimeter of our playground just to help ensure the safety of all of our students and the community who use these structures. We estimate that cost to be about $10,000 and we, um, plan for that project to coincide with the installation of the new playground as well. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions.
So now I get to interject. So this is a labor of love. Our elementary schools and our early childhood center, these playgrounds are essential. And we have, you know, wanted to upgrade these places so that they can be more inclusive. We are now in a financial situation that we can do this. And, um, you have been very patient because we did approve the Northwest Playground and Melanie Michael's business manager said, can we just wait, slow down Paula, a little bit? And then when this project came back up, we've been talking on and off. Melanie said, yes, we can do this. And the way that Melanie is suggesting with your approval is we can take 150,000 out of our local, our chapter 70 money, up 270,000, 150,000, and then 78,000 would have to be approved out of school choice to complete the project. We feel that it, it will benefit not only the school, but the community. When I, when they, when they considered the custodian, they thought about their custodian. Um, it really said to me that you took your time, you were thoughtful, you thought beyond the box. These playgrounds are utilized all day, every day, around the clock. This is a great investment for the Lemonster Public Schools and Melanie assures us that we can afford to do two playgrounds with FY23.
Questions?
Just one real quick, um, drainage, because I know in Northwest that was one, is there any issues with drainage with you?
Zero. No, theirs is actually a much better installation. The wait time is really getting the materials, the 22 to 24 weeks and, uh, it'll take a week to put it up. Um, and so, you know, they've got our Northwest project that should go up, they have the drainage issue, but this one, not to say it's easier, but it looks.
Just want to make sure if it's not here.
Yeah, we look into that.
No surprises down the line.
Mr. Ron?
You were saying that. I would just assume. Have the school think, hey, PTO can use that $10,000 for something else in the school. I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'm asking.
Come on, I actually agree with you. Whoa.
Yes.
Oh, loud. Mike's God.
They've been very courteous and patient.
Something has frozen over.
I always look over to Melanie before we say anything, yes or no. Um, they did want to have a hand in the project, they wanted to make sure that you understood that.
You see, you know, there's that game time of 20. The devil in me asks, what's going to happen with the, you know, where they're going to be playing while we're waiting, while they're waiting?
It's in the summer, they're not going to take it down.
Installation part is short, that will happen over the summers. Yeah.
And, and, and Ron, if you want to add that $10,000 fence in, that would be fabulous. We could think of many other things, but we want to contribute to the project.
Make the motion.
I mean, I, I know, I know, we're just, what I.
One person at a time.
That's okay, we want to be a part of the project though too, that's I think why the PTO is coming forth.
This still has to look a bit.
Of course, of course.
We don't know what the price is going to be, so if it comes in less, you can put that as a bit alternate. But honestly, ladies, you did a great job. The only thing, the only issue I have, it's just from past experience, is I'd rather see you put your money towards getting somebody trained on the safety of these because, and this has nothing to do with you, but to let this happen, even though it's a 20-year-old project, it's just not right. And you, you see this piece of cement sticking out of there? That's just, that's just, that should be covered up immediately. Those are the things, somebody's going to fall and they're not just going to get hurt a little, they're going to get hurt, get hurt a lot.
That's what I was thinking that 10,000 should go to is maintenance.
So part of, I think, the important thing is that somebody within the schools, they may already have somebody, there's a specific training for this, for, um, for recreation equipment. And it might be just you help pay for that and then make sure there's somebody in charge somewhere. That person is usually the person that will let, because all these joints in here and all these connections that you see here, all of them have to be inspected on a regular basis. And, uh, and just to make sure, like, that's just powder coating over steel, aluminum or steel. That's, that's maintenance. And so I, I think your money, just save your money, I think you'd be best used at maybe getting somebody in the school. Maybe somebody's interested in getting trained and then they know what to look for. Maybe a mom or a dad whose kids will be using this because then they're watching it all the time. But this stuff has to be done right away, like this superintendent, this, somebody's going to get hurt here. This is, this has to be, this has to be covered up.
Right, I would say that would be our facilities director and maybe he can work on getting it covered up.
I, I, I wouldn't let another kid on here until this is covered up. This is liability for the city and, uh, if, even beyond that, some kids could, going to trip and whack their head on, just, just can't, there has to be corrected right away.
Assistant director sitting here right now behind nodding Bill Sullivan.
Yeah, that was a good man, right, Bill? I know, honestly, I, and you know what, you know what I'm talking about. And if you need help from us, we'll be glad to send somebody down tomorrow, but I just don't want to see somebody get hurt, forget the other part. But I think we can save you $10,000. I'm sure it came from having pizza, a dollar here and a dollar, and 10,000 is like raising a million. So if everybody's in agreement with that, just kind of sit tight on it and then do the maintenance or have somebody trained and then you know what to look for. And then the other thing is maybe, maybe this might. And then the other thing is maybe, maybe this might not be good for, for us, but it might be somebody somewhere else in another school district that maybe can recondition it. Maybe that company can, they've, they've done a lot of work for us. Maybe they can, there's another system we can clear its surplus and maybe there's another school system that'll take pieces of it and recondition it and use it rather than just throwing away. Yes. Welcome. Yep. Well, I think we can, I don't mind making the motion if somebody wants to make it conditional on there's somebody always trained uh, for safety purposes and there's going to be ma, we, we're assured this, I mean, by the time we're through here, we're going to spend a million dollars on playgrounds of the city. That doesn't, that doesn't, no, 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 that's not what I was saying. Hold on, hold on. What I was saying is you might also want to have somebody trained who's a mom or a dad whose kids are early on because they're out there watching this, they know what to look for. And it's a whole training that, so more than one person could be trained in this. But anyway, I, I just want to make a conditional that we make sure that somebody's maintaining this and checking it for, for safety. And as long as that's the case, I have no issue at all. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Go ahead, you got to make the motion first.
Make the motion first.
I'm making the motion that we approve the money, including the 10,000 for the fence from the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, no, it's conditional.
Yes.
Yeah.
And conditional about, uh, that going out to them.
Reason why I brought up the 10,000 dollars. I was, I'm cute. But I was worried that, well, it's true. I was worried that I, I really, I've said it over and over and over and over. And check, you can check the videos. I've always been worried about exhausting the PTO, PTO exhaustion. I fear it like I fear the, the night and the day, but I confront my fears daily. I mean this.
All right, so can we just get, Ron, we're, we're going to do exactly, we agreed with you.
That has to be explained.
Please note, we agreed with you. So.
Even me.
Melanie, this is to, this is to, um, I guess it would be not to exceed 238,787. And then if there are other alternate bids in there, I don't know, other things they may say, put in there in case it comes in lower and they have that discretionary dollars and want to add a few things. I don't know what those things might be. Okay. Well, it's, you can still get prices and keep him honest.
Yeah. But if we get something less.
But I'm just saying, if, if we keep it so that it's, it's not to exceed 238 and then you can add other things in there on the bid alternate, but I'd get at least another price from, there are a couple of other people.
Show us to. Have these things?
Bill's here, he's listening.
And Bill, if you need any help, if there are things that, when you walk around, I haven't walked around in, I, a month or so when it was nice, I didn't want to get there. But if you need any help from the DPW, let us know, just to address those things because I just don't want anybody to get hurt. And it would be Matt and I who would be on the playground just standing there. We'd be the ones who took a step back and trip, right, Matt? Yeah. Ladies, thank you, great job. Keep up the good work.
Oh, yeah, good do all.
Yes, we, right, we, but they can go. Okay?
Really bad at this.
All right. Uh, we have a motion and second, all in favor, those opposed, thank you, unanimous. Ladies, thank you.
Oh, my, thank you.
No. Let's just see, yeah, let's see who, um.
Can I make one comment while we're still on that topic? Um, maybe going forward, if we look at having all of the other playgrounds inspected and then posting a sign at each playground that has a number where you can report maintenance issues?
Good idea.
Will there be video, will there be a camera? Bent something from happening?
They have a camera.
Bent something from happening?
Judy Sumner was our, our point, she retired, but she was our point person. And it was amazing what she could see. She could actually see the wearing on the ball joints and the bearings. She was amazed, but she retired, so we have to send yet another person for training as well. But the more people you can get trained, the better. Because they see, they see things that we don't, so, okay, good. All right, now we're going to get back to the agenda. We're going to get back to superintendent, we're going to go to Fallbrook Elementary School presentation.
Great, we have Principal Sullivan and Assistant Principal Fian Daca here with us this evening, representing Fallbrook Elementary.
How are you guys? Uh, Jeff Sullivan, as Paula said, and this is Lynn Fian Daca, if it's a possible. I do not have a, uh, paper copy, but certainly could get that for you. Off point, so.
Save, save the paper.
Save the paper. Uh, hopefully you can see some of it, I try to make him as big as possible so you can see them. If not, I can provide them. All right, so just, just to jump in real quick, I, I'm assuming all of you are aware that we are in phase two of EMSVA's program. Uh, and I was about Chris, we have, um, OEMs, special OEMs coming in tomorrow, uh, tomorrow morning to look at the school and to go through those things. So we don't, we haven't invested a lot of money this year, other than things that are necessities, obviously. So we did just, uh, have all four doors now have keypads. We haven't had keypads for most of the year. Issue with them and finally we're fixed and we added two. So those are modest pictures of those. Uh, we also have a new shed, which I believe, uh, most every school, elementary school did receive that one. It was just finished last week and it's, it's beautiful, it's perfect. And then you can't see there, the picture below that is our old generator. I know you're all aware that we had an issue back, um.
I thought somebody drove an old truck in there and the body rusted off. Honestly, I, like, what is this?
That is the original 1966 generator, which.
No, it's right.
Yep. So there is a plan and, and, uh, I'll just thank Bill and Butch and, and, uh, Boston Mechanical and Renad for helping us out. Uh, there is going to be new generator out, kind of tucked in between. Well, if you're not familiar, the back parking lot by the custodian office, there will be a new generator, hopefully. sooner than later. And we're, we are praying for warmer weather and no more power out of this, so. Those are those, sort of those things. And then like I said, we are obviously in the, in the planning process of. Chris. Uh, some of our security members, we again have those four new working, uh, uh, key penetrers. And some of those seem, I guess, uh, maybe not as important, but the structure of our building is such that when they're at recess, they have, younger kids have to enter the building. It's important to have those there, the adults obviously operate them as well as, um, gym on the opposite side. It's very, it's not safe to walk around the building, so those are very important. They're brand new. Our glass in the cafeteria has been tinted for several years now. It could be redone in certain spots, but obviously we're going to hold off on that. Have updated high definition cameras. We have what, nine, nine cameras on the building. Again, we could use more, but we're going to hold off for. Now, we do, we just completed our second Alice drill today. So I don't know if it's still technically called Alice, but it's an active shooter. Training, but just, just a drill that we go through. We do three of those per year. Day in, day out. And we have, I think similar to most schools, we have a pretty tight sign-in and security, uh, parents not let up past certain doors, uh, in the lobby. And so kind of a tough segue here. So this is, I don't know if, um, this is sort of our data for this year, the 2022. It also has 2018 and 19, which are the last two years that we had accountability data that we're going back to this year. So it's, it's not exactly, I mean, they're, they're similar, but you have a question?
I know, I know you're out there. Get rid of the DV.
Yeah, again, I can provide, I can provide if you're, if you're curious about, um, those are more. So, so as you can see for the, for this past year, we are in the 76% file. Um, the way I like to think about it is we are top 76th fence of similar elementary. We are very proud of, you know, our staff, students and our families. Very proud of that all. Then the next, the next slide just sort of goes into specifically this, this year's accountability number. Into what makes up those. So that just kind of goes into, that's where they get the number. It's two years of data, so it took 2019 and 2022, first of all. And then those indicators, what goes into that? So it's growth, achievement, um, the L progress, and I don't want to get too, too far into weeds. And then other indicators such as chronic athletism or 5% or. And again, this tough to see with that, blocking it, but this is sort of.
I know the cow.
I have all the faith in you, Kyle. All right, give him a second here. Be patient. We try to teach our kids to be patient, be patient. He'll do it, watch. See? Kyle, I believed in you.
So that's okay. So there's a lot of numbers here. I, again, I'm not going to get into, you know, if you have a question, certainly I can answer them. Um, a lot of information there. Takes our grade three, grade four and five, obviously. And then our total Fallbrook, uh, percentages. And as you can see, we're, you know, we're, and certainly not complacent, certainly not. There's always room for growth, but we are again very proud of our numbers. It's a lot of, you know, obviously a lot of hard work for staff and support from our families and, and really it's the students, right? So. So for access testing, we have students who are, and it's kind of, again, it's not a explain it, but basically, um, if they reach a certain level, they're called, they're felt, they're formally left or however involved, so that we, that's broken down by grade level. How many students in each grade based on last year's access testing felt?
Excellent.
Yo, all right, so areas of focus, we, we continue to focus on attendance and we, uh, we look at communication with families. We look at our relationships with our families. Those are our two biggest levers sort of to, to support getting that, that piece under, you know, not under control certainly. But, um, obviously you know that attendance is, is really, really important. So we use those two things to get our students to school mostly. And then we do have an attendance initiative program, which involves, in the past, it's, it's involved outside agencies in addition to DCF. We support, this, this year it's really been just DCF and a non confrontational, uh, presence. They're there to offer support, what can we do? We've had students that, that, uh, another transportation is an issue. Lots of variables that might come into play. We have them there to offer those supports, should that be an issue. And that's, that's been successful in the past. It opens up a dialogue. Some families are difficult to get a hold of when they're asked to be part of that, they come in. Sort of a chance for us and for those families to see what we can do to help support them. And then I know it's a big push for a lot of our schools or all of our schools, I should say, the culture of achievement. We're really focused on active student engagement, so it's very, it's, it's the teacher's job and it's a skill to be able to make sure that students are actively engaged as opposed to sitting there listening, um, participating, but they need to be actively engaged. And it's been a focus of ours as well. Uh, we do have 12 new, I was looking, Paula, we, probably since you left, we've more than half the staff has turned over. The support staff and so forth. We do have 12 new teachers in our building this year. So, and in particular, I've been working very hard with those teachers. That's going to be an ongoing, certainly two, three-year plans and make sure that they are understand by now what the culture of our building is, but really the, the high expectations that we have. That's been, I'll say a challenge. It's, it's a lot of people. I'm sure, you know, so that's, that's an ongoing challenge. And then all that had driven supportive interventions, uh, and your support that we offer. Being able to use data effectively, strategically. And here's the fun part, so I'll go through these very quickly. Um, but we have, uh, Mile Madness, which our, uh, gym teacher, Lona Moody, has run for years now. And you have lots of parents that show up every fall.
Matt, do you remember?
That might've been the hardest thing I've ever done.
That's awesome. Uh, so a lot of our younger grades do celebrate the 100th day and they, there's a lot of, uh, math, you know, they, they use. This is our second grade, they kind of take it to the next level. As you can see, they dress up, they have lots of fun activities that they do. Um, and it really is a celebration, but there obviously there are educational components to it. This was new for us this year, it's girls on the run. We are signed up to do it again this spring. Extremely successful, there's, I'll say the health component to it, uh, but there's also.
There's a lot of lessons that, that, um, focus on, um, girl empowerment, empowerment, sorry. And just making sure that we're advocating for them, they're advocating for themselves. And, um, there's a bunch of lessons that really look into friendships and what it means to care for someone and making decisions. Um, and then there's always the, the health component. Really great program and at the end they do a 5K. This past year it was in, uh, past fall was in, uh, we're starting.
We'll be doing that again. Fantastic. We have our amazing, amazing math races that, that sort of incorporates, uh, mathematics with physical education. So there are math tasks to be done while also participating, as you can see in some of the, uh.
To grade level.
For example, you would take, you would, you would run down jump rope, it's, you know, 15 jump ropes and then solve a math problem and then run back and it's, whatever you're going to race. Obviously the kids are very engaged with that.
I, I was actually going to say, I remember that being like a really good way to kind of get kids to both, you know, to get really interested in what, in like working. It's like, you know, it's very fun and active and then they, you know, they also get a chance to really put their academics to work. I remember loving, and I remember all my friends.
Stuff, and we haven't obviously done those, uh, the last few years due to COVID, so we brought that back this year and it's been. All right, so we have our tree farm, which has a teacher, Mrs. Fian Daca, really sort of started and the trees are maturing, I think you've had one the last couple of years.
Couple, yeah, yeah. And we, we sell them, um, for, um, really just any community, uh, community base. So we sell them typically to teachers of the family. And, uh, then we hold on to that money and use it for any projects in the school or any, if there was anything to give somebody to.
And then our composting program, which had, we've had that established for a while. And this year new, as you can see, we have something called, uh, those basketball fans, Steve, one year one, uh, a March Madness, uh, reading, uh, bracket, which is very cool. So it's just started now, so we'll see how that goes.
And so basically it's a school-wide program. So every classroom that wants to participate, they read two stories and then they vote and then it's a whole school vote. And then one of those stories will move on to the next bracket. That's what it's called. And, um, then they go all the way down to the final four, et cetera. And then there's a competition between you. So each time a book is brought to the next level, it's reread again and discussed in class and, um, but they're easy, um, easier reads. Um, and they're all available online, so teachers don't need to have, uh, just copies of them, they can pick them online.
So we have our therapy dogs, which has been, um, we've done it in the past, but we've tried to be a little more strategic in how we've used it. It's been very effective. The Galvin and Mr. Calvin, we call them, sorry. Um, as you see there, um, is a, is a student favorite, uh, that's been great. Uh, we're trying to expand it to, to some of our regulated classrooms. Typically we, we've had our RB, the students and our ADA students really access them. But we are trying to bring them to classroom. Uh, that picture of me, we have something called the Falcon phone call. I think I referenced it before. Basically, it's really about effective effort, uh, attitude and, and those things. And so once a week, it's like a grade level, this week is second grade. On Friday, I will call parents of second grade students and let them know that they've, they've run the Falcon phone call. And again, we obviously are concerned with their academics, but it's really more about their effort, attitude. That's been the phone, I mean, it's the best part of my week by far. Reactions of the parents.
Parents.
That is a running joke.
My kid did what?
Yep. Other alarm. And then we also.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. What are they?
And then new this year, we, um, And then new this year, we, um, put in place something called the Falcon Friends. So basically, um, and there's two teachers there who have. Former students of those teachers and they sort, they sort of. They have a relationship obviously from, from the previous year and they're carrying that on. So there are students that might struggle with any number of things. The stu-, those teachers have invested in them. They may typically once a week, it's very, uh, not casual necessarily, but very, um. Nothing really technical to it. It's more just about keeping that relationship going. Our questions are there to help. And it's been. I mean, I think some of the teachers have been doing it sort of informally anyway.
And it's open to all staff. So there are pairs involved. There are secretaries involved. Anybody who wants to try. Be a resource for a student, they're welcome to. Take a lead on that.
And then our, our band and chorus is back. So I know, uh, Sir Mayor is very familiar with the Songbirds. Unfortunately, that's. Deb has retired. Um. Sanchez has taken on the band and it's, it is the largest band that we've ever had, ever. And she had, there is a chorus component. It's not the Songbirds, unfortunately. We're working on her to see if she can kind of. Branch out, but she knows, she knows how much, you know, work and not work, but how tight it's been being. So we are working on her for that. Our food drive, we work with Brandon, was extremely successful. I don't know how many tons. I forget how many tons of food, few tons of food. Um, it was awesome. Amazing. We have our MS coin wars, which, uh, raises money for multiple sclerosis, like I said that. And basically there's a whole bunch of rules to it, but. Students bring in, uh, and there's a, there is a paper value too, but for the most part it's coins. Certain days will be certain values. They're either subtracted or added and there's a whole bunch of, I think in the past we raised.
Yeah, pretty. On average, it's about ten thousand dollars.
It's seriously competitive.
And it's good. It's nice because anybody can participate because anybody can bring in pennies that actually are worth a lot or dimes or nickel. So it's really, it's a great community.
And then the middle picture, obviously. So we always, we always call it our Fallbrook community. It is, it is a community. There's a family. And we have a different fam-, you know, different specific families from time to time that. Need certain things and we always try to step up and, and raise money. But that was a. That was a random selection, but he got to put a pie in my face. So. Unfortunately, it was just whipped cream and he's got, he's got a good right hand. I think that's it. Yeah. Questions?
Our, our, our dream, our dream.
Mr. Mayor?
There you go. I don't know if it'll fit the neighborhood, but.
That's better than Andover. Uh, uh, I have no comment. Is that the first, is that the first building on the mo-, on the moon or something?
One of the better photos.
Prepare for.
Thank all of you for that support and.
Prepare for takeoff.
Yeah, I'll take any questions.
Yeah, any question?
Jeff, I, we've talked about the absentee ring at Fallbrook and, uh, how across the board it's very, very low. So what's, what's the magic there? And I know we've had this conversation, but I want to have it out in the open for others to hear too.
I was saying this year, this place, not as, as of now, not as good. Really, and, and. I kind of, we have, there's a lot of things in place. Every school has that. We do believe about those relationships with those families. Um, yes, there are times there are letters that might go home, but we're not relying on that. Get that message. We're calling them at, at. Is. And typically we know the families anyways, so it's not as if we're calling them out of the blue. Just try to establish the relationships and, and really let them know the importance of being in school in front of a. An excellent teacher. And we have. There are exceptions, but for those parts, I mean, it's. And, and I think the big part is we're all invested in it. We have the guiding staff that works with them, which really. I mean, you could argue whether that's very responsible enough. They're really working. I don't know. There's any magic.
Like, it's that man. I remember a lot of things since. Obviously that was a long time ago for me. And I, I think that's something that was special about Fallbrook. Now granted, I've obviously never been to any other elementary school. But. Things like those events that you were mentioning and, and other things that make it like a community, you know, like Miss Movies After School Gym. I remember things like, like. There's, there's so many opportunities to get invested into the community. And I think that's something that is really special. That's something that a lot of other schools might, might, in terms of that magic.
I look at it like this. In elementary school, it's, it's typically never the students that want to be out. It's working with their families. So. We kind of, we kind of laugh and even want, kind of what Matt was saying is they want to be there so bad, they're waking.
Bringing their parents.
Yeah.
Greg wasn't really putting the spot on, you know, putting you on the spot, but we've had this more of a conversation with other principals. Just because we're trying to get a better understanding of what do you hear when you talk to these families as to why this student isn't coming to school. So. We can better understand it because here you are doing everything you possibly can. You're scratching your head. Well, what else can we do? How can we get this student back in? So. Oh, scientific poll here, but what, what, what are the kind, what are the kind of things that you're hearing?
So right now we have eighty-four students in them. Six hundred and fifty students. So that eighty-four, I would say, kind of them. Uh, I think the new family is a start of the school year in Ghana. Went there in the, in the. In the spring and just in contact with them. They said, we'll be back, you know, uh, mid-September, can't get a flight. It's now mid-October. There's, there's probably, I don't know, tens as well for those families that go into Brazil. There's that piece which we work with. I mean, that's. That is sort of. And there is, there is the mental health that three or four students that have been hospitalized. Students who maybe don't live where they say they live. So now transportation issue, they can't take a bus. So there's, there's, I mean, there's really not one.
Illness has been a.
Illness is there. So here's the other question. I forgot to ask the other principals. So out of that eighty-four. So eight, it's eighty-four that are chronic absentee, but that doesn't mean they're not coming to school at all, correct?
No, no.
So how many are like, out of that eighty-four are really chronic, chronic, more than the, what is it? The, the, what's the statutorys? What? Ten percent. So who, who, who's beyond that ten percent? How, what's the percentage? That are beyond the. Okay. But I'm saying real chronic, I mean, beyond that. I mean, if you have, if you have COVID or you have a bad flu or whatever you're out for.
Twenty percent?
You know, you're out for seven days, school days, right? I mean, so the real chronic, the ones you really have almost no contact with.
You have contact with everybody.
All right. So there you go. So you've established a connection with them and you're working on kind of that building relationship. On, is there something we can do to help? Is there something online that we can help you? Can we send a tutor? You're working on those things.
A dozen families that have been chronic over the, the, takes a daily phone call, offer to go pick them up.
Right.
Just. A lot of it's mental health and it has to do with the family.
Right. But you're improving on the eighty, I mean, you know who the eighty-four are. They're coming. They're just not coming as often. If it's eighty-four, you, you know who the eighty-four is, you're working with them. It's not like these kids haven't been to school at all. And I'm not the minimum, I'm not trying to minimize that at all, but. This is like work in progress every day in terms of trying to, you know, make the family understand culturally or whatever it is, the kid needs to be here every minute. Like the teachers has a plan for every day, every minute. And if you miss a week, that's a lot. And, and so, I mean, so it's not like people vanish from the system.
You would, no, we know any student that we, and we don't unroll any student. Let's say the parent says we're moving to, uh. Whatever, we will unroll.
That records from them.
Yeah.
State can concern.
Yeah. So it's more about just working it every day and building those related, and making them understand how important it is. I mean.
The first week of school, we'll look and see if you've been absent since it started. Obviously. I know. Oh, we moved to, back to Zulu or in Ghana or.
Who makes those phone calls?
Any one of us. Those ones I, I usually make, but if it's, any one of us could make them depending on the number.
Hey, Ron, thank you. I'm, and that's not to put, Greg didn't ask you the question. We've been having a more, instead of asking a question, more of a conversation about it. I'm trying to understand that. I know everybody else is trying to like, what happened? Like everyone's trying to understand what happened before COVID and then we're here. What happened? Well, two years went by and almost three now, right? Ron, go ahead.
Of course, I have two questions. It's unscientific. The numbers you gave us, eighty-six or six hundred. Came up to thirteen percent. statewide. Citywide, that higher or lower?
I think one of the lower.
It's lower. I don't know.
Too high. Normally our elementary schools have always been under like a ten percent threshold, way under. And Jeff used to go crazy before COVID. Would have what percent? I mean, it was a goal for him, right? Because there's an accountability out. So he'd be sitting at thirteen percent for him feels high, where some of our schools could be at thirty. So there's all over range. The state has the same problem. They're sitting.
I want to say when Lorene gave, Lorene gave a presentation, Fallbrooks was relatively low, but there was a pocket of students who had, uh. Higher absenteeism, but school on average, it was about or lower than some of the other elementary schools.
Yes, basically. Any gritty dirt fan. That pocket that Melissa was talking, there's pockets at all the school. Or is, does it, how does it skewer? Centricity? If you don't use those pockets, what happens?
Statistic, statistic, statistics, statistics. They lie every day to statistics.
What does he want to know, Ron? Cause I.
My question is, if you do, when you're doing these measurements. When you're doing these measurements, as Melissa said, every school has that pocket that weighs down. But if you don't use, if you don't use that pocket. And you separate it and use them just, just to show what you do. Will that help the school itself without using those pockets?
Problem is, we have to use them.
What's that would you like?
State is required, I mean, the state came up.
I'm not saying.
They didn't come up with an answer. They came up with these standards. You can compare anything you want. It's, this is a problem all over the nation and it, it, it's. It, it, they're bringing it as far as they can to understand it and do better and get these kids back into the schools. And for, we're a very diverse community. And when grandma's sick in Haiti or, or Ghana is, it, it is mandatory. It's. Normal. It's human for them to leave, to go back and see grandma and the whole family might go. Not that they don't take. Exactly. That, it might not be, it's not that they don't take education serious, but family is paramount. And. That is something that's built into their culture. There will be different religious beliefs. And they're trying to adapt to that. We're a urban community, very diverse. And is, and mental health in every category, every age group, every ethnic group is growing. You know, one of the things I was thinking of is. The police department started with our community outreach and a number of other nonprofits and organizations have jumped on board with that community outreach. They've been really successful at, you know, this kind of team that goes out into the community to address. Every kind of issue you can imagine. It might be helpful if maybe somebody from the school department joined the team because. That now you have all these other people working with you on things that maybe you have no control of beyond the educational component of this. It might be worth attending a meeting or two once in a while, cause you're not going to, as I read and read and read about this. Uh, no one has, I, I keep reading them, keep looking for the solution. No one has it. Not in California, not in Maryland, nowhere. And so we all know what we're supposed to do, get kids to school, because we all know how important it is. But. After COVID, we're, we're left with this here and nobody has any kind of solution at all. And culturally you can understand where people lost loved ones. That they never got to say goodbye to in the hospital, couldn't go to see him, died alone. Culturally, for many, they're like, hey, you know what? Grandma takes precedent or uncle around or somebody. So sorry, but guess what? That's, that's more important. I might never get a chance. To see them in their time moments or whatever. So all this is going on while you're trying to run it, an educational system that the state is trying to tell you. You have to report, you have to do all of this. And you know, I mean, just, it's mindless. It doesn't make sense.
So even if families are going out of the country, we want to know that. So we have.
Try to help them, right? Give them books to take with them.
To be safe. Just make sure we know where our kids are. And it's documented in our system that we know someone's going to be out for six weeks, eight weeks, three weeks, whatever it has to be. We have to be.
We, I think I speak for everybody. We, we believe you're doing everything you possibly can. Based on the other conversations we've had, I don't know, again, I don't know anything else. Maybe we ought to look at a. In the next budget, a full-time outreach person that helps you. I don't know how much time you have to spend on this, but this isn't going away anytime soon. The state isn't lowering their numbers. We care about what happens to these kids. So maybe there's, you start off with one. Community outreach person that, you know, participates with these other agencies and maybe that. Maybe we could measure that, see whether or not that helps. But I think more and more our, our, our answer to a lot of things is outreach. Just because world changed on us in the last three years and didn't change back.
Just gonna say those, uh, those like weekly calls or monthly calls or whatever. That's something I, I never, a lot of other schools doing. That's a good opportunity to just be in contact with the parents, maybe not for disciplinary reasons, maybe not for. You know, oh, we need your kid in school. Just, just to know, hey, like, I'm me, you're you, you know, we know each other, uh, you know? So if you get my number again, you know, you know, it's just, it's good to establish that. So you don't have to just like.
Nice connection. What we're looking for. I was just gonna say, I mean, everything is really relationship-based. And I think all of our schools are really trying very hard to do the outreach. Um, I think some schools have different populations and with more disenfranchised maybe families. Um, and so that impacts their ability, but it's. Hard to get students in the classroom so that they can learn and to support the pay. And I think, you know, our free breakfast and lunch is a major. Piece of getting kids to school as well for all those securities. So that's something that I think can use. And it's, you know, things like that, that help alleviate insurance stress.
Second question I had, at the beginning. Said that. The changeover rate. Paula had left, it's twenty-six percent, right?
So, um, I'd say I was. Right. I'm not, I would say, I don't know, I don't know the percentage. I said half. Okay. But but keep in mind, we have an, an ABA inclusion program.
Yeah.
We have an SSC inclusion program, um, which is, is a good bulk of our staff. So when I say staff, I mean all supports.
Right, right. So that, what I wanted to know was. And Paula, jump in and stop me. Is this higher, lower, or the same? Drop, drop, drop.
Yeah.
Drop the district.
Yeah.
And versus the state. How is?
It's very similar, similar.
We turn over eighty percent of the police department, eighty percent of the fire department. It becomes people aged out and they retired. And now you have all brand new people. It happens once every thirty years. And that's what happened there. Since Paul left there, I mean, look around, you can walk through any school building and more than half the teachers are new in the last, you know, five years and so, right?
All the buildings are similar. They also go to other districts for higher pay or they move and there's lots of reasons to stay home. Right. There's more transient. Turnover in jobs across the wall. Since COVID.
Mayor was talking about how adding another, adding an outreach to the individual schools and whatnot. The part that's not addressed or maybe it's hidden to the table, it's a very labor-intensive job.
Yeah, that's not hidden. That's not. Yeah, we're talking. Yeah, teachers, yeah.
It's labor intensive. And she's the one.
Well, I think that the, the situations that they're dealing with, that'll be on mental health or. Well, I think that the, the situations that they're dealing with, that'll be on mental health or beyond, are very complex. That's why I say you almost need somebody can dedicate, can dedicate their time working on each student. It's not going to be eighty-four to five kids. It's going to be eighty-four to eighty and then eighty to seventy-five. I mean, that's, you know, because the, the, the faster you shrink this, the more complexity that particular issue seems to be. And I'm just saying, the ABRA funds were supposed to be used to help kids catch up, to help the school system catch up after COVID. So I don't think it's unreasonable to have somebody who's an outreach person in a system that has six thousand kids that can work with these other agencies when he's trying to do and she's trying to do and the teachers are trying to do what we hired them to do. And you know what I'm saying? All the other disciplinary, whatever's going on, the generator is down. I, I, it just, you know, we got a big problem like this and we, we've got this much time to work with it while they're doing all those other things that we saw them doing today. So just the thought that that's what our funds are for and more and more, we've had such success with our community outreach team at the police department beyond my wildest expectations on, in the same areas. And I'll bet you some of the areas they're working with are the same families that are having a difficult time getting their kids to school. It just all comes full circle, but we can take that up budget time or whatever, right? All right, other questions?
We just have one comment as a parent. Um, you guys do an amazing job and, uh, every time I go there, every time I talk to parents, other teachers, you know, uh, it's, it's a great state of mind there. You guys, your performance academics are amazing. It's consistent year after year. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very, very, very much. Lana, do you really want to do a graduation dropout rate?
No.
Well, we can bring back the, we'll bring back Eli there, the, what did he call?
Yeah. Robot.
Eli, what was his name?
Elliot, Elliot, I don't know.
So unfortunately for Lorene, anything accountability lands on her desk. So this is yet another piece of accountability. Sure. I want this title. Well, I guess you do. Does it better, Lorene?
Give your applause till the end.
Yeah.
So all kidding aside, thank you very much for your time. The data that have just come out for the state, uh, graduation rate and dropout rates. So these are grade nine through twelve pieces of data that we're going to be looking at. And just as a point of reference, these are, neither one of these is based on this year. So this data is from the students who were in school with us, um, in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So that we start collecting and it's always at least one year behind so that we get to this information. Uh, this is the, uh, the way that graduation rate is calculated. So this is my division problem. The number of students who are in the cohort and that cohort is what's described in the denominator here, use my math terms. Who graduated in four years or less and the denominator is the number of students who came into our ninth grade classes. And then we subtract out anyone who transfers out and we then actually add in anyone who transfers in. This is the basic graduation rate. There are actually four different ones. There's a four-year graduation rate. There's that four-year adjusted graduation rate. There's a five-year graduation rate and a five-year adjusted. Tonight, we're just going to be talking about the, um, the four-year cohort graduation.
Which is the formula you just discussed about students going in.
So all of our ninth graders.
How many started?
And those are the ninth graders. Amen.
Gotcha.
In two thousand, so October of two thousand eighteen, when we did our October one, that's, these are the students that we're talking about.
Got it.
Hit the button up. So this is, um, your frame, our frame of reference. I've given you four years' worth of data here. This, this is, um, a steady trend upward, uh, and we've had a little bit of a gain, but we're staying pretty close right now between twenty-one and twenty-two. So we're over ninety-five percent of our students who come in will graduate within four years. And, sorry, yes, for this, yeah. Um, the state is somewhere in the high eighty percent. So they're, um, they've been looking at this now since two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, and they've had a steady increase too while they're paying attention to this. So they're maybe at eighty-eight. I don't have it right in my head, but high eighties for the state and Lemonster, all of our students together. So this is all of our three schools together, ninety-five point eight for the year of twenty twenty-two. Questions about that? This is the dropout rate and, um, this again is for students who were, um, with us from two thousand and nineteen on, but we, there's a span of data collection that helps us to determine the graduation rate. So every October one, we have information, count all of our students and that information goes in. So this is based on October one of twenty twenty-one. And at that point, we also look at the students who were with us in the, in June of twenty twenty-one and who didn't come back when we count our October numbers. They call those summer dropouts. So those are students who were with us and then have gone, um, have left us throughout the summer. So that would have been the summer of twenty twenty-one.
Do they go to another school or do they just lose?
So there's a number of places that they could be. Yeah. Um, then we have, um, our end of year sims. So as of the last day of school, we do, um, we report to the state. And that then gives us the school year dropouts. So students who were with us in October and we reported they were ours and are no longer with us at the end of June. We then take both of those numbers. So we have um, some summer dropouts and we have school year dropouts and they put those together. They then wait until the next October and any student, so that would have been October of twenty twenty-two, this past October. On, from that data reporting, any child who had left us and then came back or then went to another district in Massachusetts or got a GED before October first, those numbers come off. So they're subtracted off and that's why it spans these three data collections. So we have
Like a capture rate.
Yes.
They figured out the kind of pluses and minuses.
Thank you. No, no. So.
That goes back to the question we were having.
Yes, yes. So this information is also for the past four years. But I've given you the number of students and this is the combined summer and school year dropouts and the percent of our total population in grades nine through twelve. So we were holding very steady and unfortunately in twenty twenty-two, um, we did have quite, um, a spike that, and we're now at one point four percent of our population for the last school year is considered a dropout. We are still well above the state average, which is somewhere around three, four percent. I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, the better side of it. Thank you for that. Yes. Uh, so, uh, we, but this is not something that we, uh, that we're happy with, obviously. And where do they go? So when we look at these students and we know every single one of these students and we have notes that have been taken about all of the things that have been, all of the connections that have been tried to make, what the things we're trying to do. So, um, at the time that we did get this information first, uh, we had four of these students, four of the twenty-six who were leaving and their reason was for employment. They had a job and they were leaving us to go direct into the workforce.
They let, a couple of days ago, everybody laughed at me when I said, never let your kid take a summer job roofing because you make a lot of money and they think they can do that for a long time until their body wears out at about thirty-five. But, and this is what happens is you make some good money.
Five of the students, through the conversations with the student and their families, were, uh, were planning to go for their GED. So, yeah, so there were five that were considering that. Um, Mount Wachusett has a program for GED and there are a couple of other opportunities. The state actually now is supporting students. So there's no cost for GED testing.
But they still count as a, I mean, let's say student simultaneously just literally leaves school and goes into a GED, they're still counted as a
So if they go into the program and they actually attain their GED before that next October, they come off.
Okay.
These students, these five students had not attained their GED as of October twenty twenty-two. So they were still considered a dropout for us. There's another, um, group, nine of the students. We received information that they were transferring someplace and then they never went there. So that's something we're looking into now. Uh, we have students that were summer dropouts from this summer and there were five of them who the information we had, they were going to another school. They did not enroll in that school. So we are now determining where they may have been. And that includes all kinds of outreach, you know, talking to their friends because they are high school students, talking to the aunts, the uncles, the neighbors, um, but the high school is doing their very best to determine where they might be. They're not in a public school in Massachusetts because if they were, we would know about. So, um, that's, that's one component. Um, when we did share this information, when we received it, uh, at the beginning of the school year, uh, Dr. Romano and, um, Mr. Bechant were very much, and John Gansler, excuse me, very much on board with this. And there are some supports that they have put in place for this school year with our students to, to try to wrap our community around them and keep them here from all of those summer roofing jobs.
Nothing wrong with working hard or roofing. I'm just saying that money is enticing.
The, uh, we have an after-school tutoring program and that there are students that are invited to attend and then there are students who are really invited to attend. So that's, um, that's taking place now. There are different credit recovery options for students who are having attendance issues. So they don't get themselves to a place that they're fried down in a hole and, and don't feel that they can get out. We have some academ, we've added academic support sections that are in addition to students who have IEPs and really targeted ninth and tenth graders. So students who came up into ninth grade with some academic risk in their middle school years. There's a statistic that says if you fail a course in your freshman year, you are much more at risk of not graduating within four years. So we're really targeting the success for ninth and tenth graders, get them on the path, have them feel success so they'll stay with us.
That's interesting. One course.
Yes. So I'll get that data, but it's very interesting.
And, and it just might be though, being a freshman, a woman is overwhelming to begin with. Now you add in, it's long to course, I guess.
I think that's the accountability data.
Had an F in my class.
What's that? Did you say an A?
No.
Oh, I thought you said A. I was gonna tell you, I never, I don't think I go.
I got a D minus.
But it's, it's apparently statistically, you know, as a, as a fresh person, you
Yes.
Add to the high risk factor.
Fear of success.
And that's what they're trying to do. Build some confidence so that they understand they will make it through.
Yes, if they are successful, the feeling of success works. So if we can have them feel success as ninth graders at our school, they're, they're going to continue on with us.
It's interesting that's a statistic.
Saturday school. So that's an option and we're using that, um, well, we're doing our very best not to suspend students outside of school, um, but we're using Saturday school. And when students do attend Saturday school, um, or Saturday detention, um, they are expected to complete academic work. Their teachers, our academic teachers are there overseeing the Saturday work. So help some of our students to get back on track. We have some new and exciting curricula that, um, students are engaged with in ELA and mathematics. Some of the, what we've heard about ELAs, the students are really interested in the text in the selections, they're contemporary, they connect with them. So, uh, they're very interested in the ELA component. And we have a bright program, which, that's another one of our, um, initials. It's a bridge for resilient youth in transition. So this is specifically targeting students who may have been out of school for, um, a long period of time for maybe a medical issue or some other issue. And they're going, we will have people supporting them to get back into the swing of things, so to speak, or to help them to re-engage in school successfully. And the student assistant, assistant team, which has been in place for a good long time, has been resurrected or redefined this year. And right now to date, they have sixty-four students who are on plans based on the student assistance team. So these are all really good supports that have been put in place because the, um, our current administration would like very much to see this number go back to where it had been in the past years.
I have a much better understanding.
I have a quick question and it, and it might be anecdotal, so I don't want to put you on the spot. Um, do you have a sense of if there's populations or grades in particular that are being most impacted? Is it kids who are struggling with MCAS and just say, forget it, I can't do this? Is it special ed population? Is it, um, ELA learners? Is there, you know, pockets that you're finding? Grades or a grade itself?
So dropout tends to be more eleventh and twelfth. For all, and that's been the trend for the last few years. We do have also a, um, a steady increase in our newcomer population. These would be young people from another country that, that come in and it's very, very difficult for them to get, if they're sixteen and need to acquire language as well as pass MCAS and get themselves into classwork that will give them a diploma. So we're looking at that. That's another group of students that that we're looking closely at how we can support them.
So you're saying they came later to this country. So it's hard to, it's easy. Well, we know if they start, if they start at kindergarten, they got their thing mastered. By the time they hit eleven through twelve, it's, it's a hot thing to do.
Sorry. Age specifically, what happens if in a twenty-four-year-old? Somebody's flying.
No. So we, we have students and we keep our students until they're twenty-two, if they would like to, to stay and still be educated. So, um, we need to give them the opportunity. You know, if they're twenty-four, as you mentioned, we would be, um, speaking to them or counseling them to go to Mount Wachusett. Um, they have some programs there and they have a campus here in Lemonster for families that, um, or students that want to continue their education, but beyond what we have grades, um, pre-K to twelve.
Like being a thing with the kid. And no fault of his or her own, all of a sudden, you know, he or she wants to learn, but.
Sometimes, Ron, they're going to work for a company like Mass Hire will give a grant or gives grants to teach English as a second language. So a lot of times the manufacturer or construction company off-season would hold these courses right inside the, you know, right inside their facility if they have them, if not off-campus somewhere and gradually they take the courses and because they've left our system statutorily, now they've moved on to either the community college or some private nonprofit. And there are agencies out there that are doing this all the time. So there are other options beyond speaking of. Thank you. Thank you. Next one is the house building program. Thank you, Lauren. The next is the house building program. So we had, come on up. We had, um, auctioned a lot of property. We had built up either We had auctioned a lot of property, we had built up either tax titled property, abandonment property. We're kind of taking another look at that and seeing if there's not the ability to work. And one of the problems with a house building program is there's no more land. So you put it out there and who's got a piece of land in Leominster that you can build a house on? So right now we have a piece on Burke Street that we own, we haven't auctioned it yet. And what we'd like to do to get that program going again for a house building program, if the superintendent, the system, you know, school committee approves it. Is to if we have the land, obviously there's value in the land. So trying to figure out, we have to bid it out, is it market rate or some of the laws that are changing in the state? That would allow us not to give somebody a piece of land, but pro rate it based on say income. And then CTEI could build maybe even like we did last time, but have habitat humanity. Whether we could actually build a house or a duplex for two families to live in. So we have at least one piece right now, but if we'd like to test it out, see if it works. If it works, then rather than selling these properties and then somebody fixes them up and, you know, they buy them from from us for a hundred. And they sell them, you know, fix them all up, sell them for three, four hundred thousand dollars later. And we just, I I don't know if you we publicly put out a bit, you know, say, hey, we'll build you a house if anybody has a piece of land. And and how do you keep it? And we were trying to build new housing or trying to make new housing available that's affordable. Which is not a word that's in the dictionary anymore.
Yes, you know, we used to. Used to have applicants apply, owned a piece of land.
Right.
Had a set of plans and then we would put the names in a hat. That person won the opportunity for CTEI.
Right. Had to have a foundation in the ground by July or something, whatever it was, yeah.
Having it in there by August, kids come back the last week of August. Guys delivered the house. Get started on the foundation, frame themselves, et cetera. And it was a great project. I stopped about seven years ago and just weren't people with property in.
Yeah. So. Well, we got down to splitting a property, they would have a piece of land, a house and a land next to it and they split it. Then they'd sell their house and then move into our house, that wasn't what the program was set up to be, it was really set up to help a family. That might never ever get into, you know, their own home to 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 take advantage of a program like.
Smaller scale, the house we're working on right now, we're doing addition. First, the second house we ever built as a trade school, it's the third house up past the high school on Granite Street, corner of Granite and Revolution Drive. Addition's about three quarters the size of this ranch. And as ranches go, they're typically sixty to eighty feet long, this one's closer to sixty feet. Addition's over forty feet and and it's the depth of the house, so it's a considerable addition. And it's great because it's real work and hands on for those kids. But a a clean house, the benefit of that, when you get into renovations, now you're getting into upgrading the existing home.
Yeah, power.
Bringing up fire code, power, plumbing, if it's cast iron, you gotta rip it out, replace that with PVC throughout that house. Now you're tearing out walls in that house.
So it's not really just the additions, like rebuilding the first house you built, right?
And what happens is we recommend that homeowner hire plumbing crew. Just because of liability, when you start tampering with someone's home and 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 getting into the walls and all. Hey, if you if you upgrade the panel from a hundred amp or sixty amp to two hundred amp.
Surface, yeah.
We'll we'll run a line out to the addition and we'll put a sub panel, do everything from there. But we don't want to mess with the inside of that house and upgrade the fire alarm, et cetera, same thing for the plumbing. Don't want to start tearing cast iron out of walls, framing that, fixing, running PVC or any of you, you're in someone's home, they're living there. We can't come in like a typical crew can with the kids that are learning on the job and banging out in forty four hours to forty eight hours. So the toilet's in use tomorrow or tonight, you know, the learning experience for these kids. That part of it, we kind of say, hey, we tell them right up front, you can do this, but you gotta take care of all the upgrades and I take it from there. So to have a piece of property, you want a house and you got a set of plans.
Well, I was thinking we build a house.
Yep.
And then we create a lottery and it has to be some eligibility in there where, you know, you make income level and make, we don't want to put them in a house they can't afford on that same level. And we don't have to generate a profit. And as we acquire other pieces along the way, we don't acquire a lot, but we had a pretty big auction last time. Raised over a million something by, you know, auctioning off those properties and all midmen fixed up and turned back. But there there was just not a whole lot of opportunities, the only thing I could think of is, and you know, a way to get in there and build it. And now we're not, you know, and then the other thing is towards the end of that seven years ago, we're building big houses.
Oh, yeah.
And that's not what, this is supposed to be like a family home, a starter home, this wasn't supposed to be, you know, a three thousand square foot.
Typically under two thousand.
Yeah, this was getting. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Weekend.
Yeah. But what what it was set up for and and towards the end of the year, we're running out of time, cabinet's wearing in, you know, there was some friction there. I just think build the house and there'll be plenty of people that will put in for the lottery to get that, to buy that house. We have to figure out what our costs are and you sell it and somebody becomes a.
If you wanted to do a duplex, you know.
Whatever, yeah.
They'd be a smaller scale, but now you help.
Right.
So you got something like that.
Well, we have step one, which is the land, and now we just have to figure out out the mechanics of how do we get that house to somebody else? Is it is it all the legal parts of it all? And I'm pretty sure at the end of the day, we can, we can do all of that, there's a lot of new laws, so. Just need to for vote or 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 just to know that everybody's on board, I don't want to go any further, people aren't on board, you know. Not in the real estate business, what can I own these things, they'll be, if it is, it'll be condo'd out and then they'll hit on them or whatever.
The housing authority to see if there's like DHCD funding available.
That's what I said, there are a lot of new things that are happening, the governor just, they just passed a ton on, I eighty one, I figure it was the total amount, but some huge amount. They're changing things around, that's why I say it's a perfect opportunity to take advantage of that. All these new programs, and there's so much coming towards affordable housing. And yeah, the answer is yes, I think, you know, we've spoken with them already, but I think they're even beyond that.
Thank you.
And, you know, unfortunately, we might be only helped two at a time or one at a time, but if we get this program, you never know, somebody might donate a piece of land. And say, look, this is a good thing to do, want to help a family, have this piece of land, I'll take this tax write off or I just want to make a donation. But I'd love to see the students start building a house, there was a lot of pride. My friends still talk about the house they built when they were at trade school is what we call it. There's still people at Saxon Trade talking about the projects they do, or Worcester Trade, talking about the projects that they were involved in fifty years ago. That's pride, you know, that's pride.
Fourteen houses when I was.
Yeah, I bet you remember every single one of them, yeah. I bet you remember when Dylan Dwyer came to the corner of Spruce and Whitney Street. To cut the ribbon on the house that you did with yourself and the habitat.
Channel seven, where the lady come out.
That's her, and now she's on Good Morning America or whatever.
Really?
Yeah. In the rain, the pouring rain, she was a sport, she was a sport.
Yeah, you know, we're we're fine as far as the logistics of the land and all that stuff, that's not, that's not.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that.
But you've got a, you've got a piece of land. We're ready and I know that the pawn shop, the HVAC shop. HVAC.
Yeah. Let me work on the mechanics of it all and then we'll get back to you. Okay.
I thought I was coming in to discuss all these projects. Renee Renee told me, bring a bunch of projects, Dan.
I could just, I could just tell you, and based on what you said, the the few parents that I've already talked to about open house. It was supposed to be Saturday, moved to Sunday, were very impressed and they hope their kids, you know, pick one, I guess it's confusion, you gotta pick. At the end of the day, you gotta pick one, right, you go through the exploratory, but.
Well, no.
No, you don't have to do that anymore.
Here's the choices since we're on TV.
Yeah.
People, people who missed it can hear you and then sign up for three different programs.
Oh, okay.
Health arc or health assisting. Electronics or business technology. Grade in the eighth grade, guidance counselors come this week, they can sign up for those right away. One of those electronics is also part of exploratory. Because electronics is a funny program. We got our, we got our little guy sitting back here and those kids, they're they're high deployed, those kids know what they want coming out of eighth grade. They know what they want probably coming out of fifth grade. But there are other kids that will get exposure to that.
Right.
By going through exploratory that will grow the program. And so we have fourteen shops, twelve of them are part of exploratory. So the kids that don't sign up for those three shops right away can sign up for exploratory. That program runs from first day of school to the end of first semester. And at the end of first semester, they pick their three favorite shops. Meanwhile, they get a grade for all twelve shops that they go through during that timeframe. And we put those kids in order from top to bottom, highest grade to lowest. Highest grade, first choice, second highest grade, first choi-, you know, and right down the list until you're exhausted, gone through all the kids. Anyone who did not get their first, second or third choice can now choose a program that didn't get filled. Or say, I'm not CTEI material, I just want to go to a high school and do academics. And that's an okay choice for them because they can still pursue a trade or a vocation after high school. Biggest challenge for us is we have, we've been averaging over three hundred freshmen every year. At the end of the freshman year, due to space and the staff that we have, we only take a hundred and ninety. So a hundred and ten kids who want to be in CTEI don't have room for them. We've got a, we've got to look at that and see what we can do to expand CTEI. We have some ideas on that that we can discuss another time.
Facebook's coming forward on March twentieth, that'd be a good time.
Exactly, but but the thing is, is that there's there's a lot of programs, there's a lot of opportunities, so the kids have the the three choices essentially. Specific shop, exploratory, or at the end of semester one, they can decide to go back. On average, it's somewhere between twenty five, thirty kids out of three hundred plus that decide. Either they decide it's not for them or they didn't make the cut and we decide it's not for you. That's it's a small amount that don't want.
If they don't, they don't make the cut, are they able to earn their way back in somehow? At all, after freshman year?
Yeah, I know, I mean, usually if they didn't make the cut, it was a pretty significant issue, safety issue, something like that.
Yeah.
Few of those, not too many. Fun, same. And that's impossible, hundred and some odd. Thirty person in the ass, how much money are we losing by not able to? Firstly, secondly, where are they going to go? Thirdly, how's that going to harm us?
So I'd like to hold those conversations until they do the operation of the.
All right, I would just.
Yeah. Here tonight, just really to talk about.
We just wanted to talk about the building program. But John, we asking those questions, so you make sure you're prepared.
So you don't want Renee's other projects?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
And then.
Could ask Greg Shafran to follow the projects theme.
He's trying. Just on the sign for the parent information center.
We're on it.
Two, two families stopped me during vacation and said, where do I? And they're on the corner, so.
Yes, so Christine and Jim and Ed said that I need to do it in at least three languages right now, so we're designing that.
As long as they can coincide with the black and white.
Yes, exactly.
Signs we have, all right, let's move on to approval of the minutes, has everybody had a chance to review them? All right, motion by Eileen, second, all right, second by Melissa. If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor signify unusual manner. Those opposed, thank you, and now move on to subcommittee reports, do we have a policy subcommittee? Okay, thank you, finance.
Finance here.
Melanie in person.
I'm in person.
MIP.
It's taken a day off, so I took a day off.
It's okay.
Um, we want to do the.
Yeah, what whatever you want to do.
Budget calendar that needs to be voted every year? If you have any questions, no?
Was May a little late, we were looking at that today, thinking that we we did it earlier last year, no, pretty consistent? Yeah.
About the time we did it last.
All right.
Yeah.
It actually feels like we just did it. Okay.
Need a vote on it?
I believe that requires a vote, yeah.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, all in favor, those opposed, thank you. Go ahead, Melanie.
So now that that's up, when, we have updated financials in there. As you can see, we're, I'm actually, to be honest, this is very exciting for me, the last three months, we're doing so many big things. As you know, you mentioned the CTEI updates to their instructional equipment, that's long overdue. So it's, you know, it's kind of exciting for me to to be a part of all that and see that happening, so say that.
Say yes to everything.
I know, it's it's really nice to be able to say that, where in previous years we did not. Looking to see, and I think they missed the page. Um, on our finances. I see the salary, but I don't see the extent.
Yeah, I can spend.
Okay, I don't want to do it. I thought so.
One point.
But I don't see it, that's okay. You can see we're still obviously in a in a position where we're spending down some money. We've set aside everything we need to set aside and we still have those positions that are open that we don't fill them, we're going to carry them forward into the next year's budget because we do still need the positions. So there is some money that will be left on the line that we potentially could move to expenses to continue all the positive work that we've been doing. But I'm going to wait and see what happens with the bargaining units and wait till their contracts are ratified, make a decision for that. But other than that, we still have about approximately three million dollars to get us through the last three months of the school year. It's a good decent amount.
Sun's getting stronger.
It's it.
The thermostat down.
Yeah.
No windows.
Thank goodness for that, the, I'll tell you, the utility bills are insane. Thing, so.
Good thing we moved towards, you know, the natural, get more efficient, you know, we'll change the lighting, all of that, we really would have been in trouble.
That have already gotten done, which were our most inefficient when it came to lighting, so Pre Street and Bennett got done. So they have all the updated LED lights, so that should.
It's a good thing.
Save us down the road, I believe we're moving on to a few other ones, but we wanted to do those two first. But yeah, so we still have our revolvings, of course, those are sitting nicely and we like to have that with with us just in case. But other than that, we have our warrants.
All right.
Favorite part of every school committee.
I know, I saved them for you.
Shorter list.
A little bit, I tried.
Go ahead, Brandon.
I'll make a motion to approve the following warrants, we have warrant twenty eight, which totals two million, eight hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and eighteen cents. Warrant twenty nine, which totals four hundred and seventy six thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and thirty cents. Warrant thirty, that totals five million, six hundred and sixty four thousand, seven hundred and eighty seven dollars and twenty four cents. Warrant thirty one, which totals fifty eight thousand, two hundred and seventy one dollars and forty one cents. Warrant thirty two, which totals two million, four hundred and sixty four thousand, three hundred and eighty one dollars and seventy cents. Warrant thirty three, which totals. Warrant thirty three, which totals eight hundred and forty three thousand, nine hundred and eighty seven dollars and forty three cents. Warrant thirty four, which totals two million, eight hundred and sixty four thousand, sixty one dollars and thirty eight cents. From grants and revolving warrant twenty eight, which totals two hundred and seventy five thousand, one hundred and eighty eight dollars and sixty eight cents. Warrant twenty nine, which totals four hundred and fifty six thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars and eighty one cents. Warrant thirty, which totals two hundred and twenty eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and ninety cents. Warrant thirty one, which totals eleven thousand, ninety four dollars and forty three cents, warrant thirty two, which totals two hundred and fifty nine thousand, four hundred and eighty two dollars and thirty seven cents. Warrant thirty three, which totals six hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and forty five cents, and warrant thirty four, which totals four hundred and forty nine thousand, forty four dollars and sixty one cents.
Okay, Brandon made the motion, is there a second? Second, any other questions or comments, if not, signify unusual manner, all right, unanimous?
I think you have a few.
Surplus items, okay, has anybody had a chance to look at those? Sure, okay, is there a motion to declare them surplus? All right, second, thank you, all in favor, those opposed? What else, Melanie?
We have a donation.
We have a donation.
Yes.
Let's make the donation.
So it's. Yeah, actually, Andres was able to. B and B fence. Um, he was able to secure an eighty five hundred dollar fence in a, in a donation from B and B Fence.
Beautiful.
Motion to approve.
Thank you to B and B. A second, all right, and we make sure they got a thank you card from the.
And written.
Yes. What else? Up to lead equipment, everything's done.
Yeah.
All right, let's vote on the twenty twenty four, now we're making an assumption that we've looked at all the holidays and.
Yes.
Holy days and. Yeah. Maybe send a, did you send a copy to the rabbi, just to?
It is.
You already planning next year, barely get through February.
Maybe his birthday's on the twenty ninth of February.
All right, um, we, you want to most, do you need to, we need to approve this now or you want to just wait, you do?
Yeah, it needs to vote.
Okay. If we have to change it, we'll change it, all right, motion to approve the twenty twenty four, you can believe it, twenty twenty four school calendar.
Motion.
Second. All right, second by Sal, any others, no questions? All in favor, those opposed, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks, Mel.
All right, we'll go to, uh, new and old business, E L L report, are we going to do that?
No, these are just for information, you have an E L L report, a student enrollment report, H R report back to December till present.
Yep.
And an M pass. Season in case anyone's asking you questions, Joe.
The only thing I had to say, and this is really for our two student leaders. Is I, I got another call today from the mass life science people.
Yes.
And we really are trying to push the whole internship programs that they have. Push everybody you know towards that website. There are just, they'll do anything, I mean, obviously you're trying to cultivate. Future employees into the life science business. And they're trying to do. Everything and anything they can to help students who might be interested in these, these programs. Yeah, but anybody. I've got the whole, yes.
All right.
We got the, just go, send them, it's life, there's apprenticeship programs into it, they keep adding to it. To try to, you know, it used to only be to. Mass Life Science, Massachusetts Life Science, I think it's masslifescience.org, but if you just look up that up. And there's a whole section in there and, um, you know. Keep saying, the first name you give is life science, because it doesn't sound very interesting, people automatically hear science and if they're not really into science, they. But there's so many different components to life science world, so many pieces of it. And it's, you know, it's still a growing, we still dominate the life science business, but. They know they have to reach back to. Eighth and ninth grade to start cultivating. Employees, right? Future. All right, anything else on the new world business? Do we need to go into executive session?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, this is a voice vote, we start with Mr. Mr. Ron.
Yay.
Yay.
Yeah.
Yay, but don't forget the art show on Thursday night.
Right.
Hey, unified.
Wait, we're in the middle.
Okay, I guess I'm voting yay. Keep it going.
Okay, thank you, everybody that joined us tonight, whether it's on.